I suppose, Carlotta, you're good for us to go? Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and do the preamble. He's messing up my order, though, what I wanted to do. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'll go ahead and get this hearing started. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board has the power, under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines, to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use requests, and to consider appeals from any decision of city staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines. They have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'll go ahead and introduce our board members who are here today. On the audience's right is Dave Gare. Next to him is Rhonda Sidillo. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. Next to me on my right is Marlis Jones. Next to him is Justin Gross. And I believe we'll have a sixth member of our seven-member board here shortly, Mr. Nathan Blake. I'll introduce our city staff, who will be assisting today with the hearing. On my left is the Zoning Board of Adjustment's legal counsel, Gary Guidelock. Down here, kind of in order of appearance, we have Frank Dunn Young, senior city planner, Bert Drost, deputy planning administrator, and Eric Lundey, zoning enforcement officer. Our meeting moderator, just here front and center, is Carlotta Walder. I'm going to go over the meeting's procedure. For some of you, this may be your first time in front of us. You may hope it's your only time. But don't worry about the process and procedure. We'll guide you through that. We're basically here to listen to your case and your reasoning. But I'll go ahead and go over our procedures, and again, we'll help you out as we move through the agenda. First and foremost, the Zoning Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. The meeting is open to the public. The meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria that's been established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by the board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. The items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is kind of our first section of the agenda, those consent items are not planned to be individually discussed. Rather, they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions recommended by staff, or if there's an individual present here today or a member of this board that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on that agenda item can occur. So I'll come back to consent agenda in a moment here. After an item on the regular portion of the agenda has been announced, city staff will first give a brief overview of the requested appeal, and they will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their reasoning for their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing for that agenda item. Anyone wanting to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of that appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to provide their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board for the hearing item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken on the item, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. Lastly, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments, if they so choose. All speakers must speak only from the podium here at the center of the room. There's a little computer screen, the overhead, and there's a microphone. So you've got to stand at the podium. Begin your presentation by first giving both your name and address. That address can be your place of business or residence, as appropriate for the item, in the event you may need to be contacted for legal notices related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are asked to ensure that they are respectful of time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item. The board will immediately deliberate the request and make a decision on the appeal here today. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. Now, this is a seven-member board. We don't always guarantee that all seven of us are here. We have a very good attendance record around here. Once in a while, we might have six. If we would get down to five members and your agenda item comes up, we can give you the option, if you want to kind of roll the dice and go, "Well, with only five, if it takes four to approve my item G," those are pretty tight odds for me. I'd like to defer this to the next month. You have the opportunity to do that, but if we get to the next month, we can't guarantee you that I've got all seven. Maybe we just have six. We could have five again. So you can't kick the can down the road indefinitely. But again, if you feel like five members aren't enough, please let us know. We are planning to have Nathan here, so this will be a six-member board. So if your appeal is approved through this hearing process, we ask that you wait until at least about this time, one week from today's hearing, to contact the city's permit and development center if you need to obtain any necessary building or sign permits related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order. That document will be provided to both you and city staff for the record. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. Finally, the decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa District Court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations, but only for future considerations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation is a part of the permanent record. So if you haven't provided copies to staff already of anything you're going to present, you'll need to do so. You may contact city staff after the hearing if you'd like a copy of anything presented here today. Quick housekeeping items, we ask that you please avoid any undue conversation in the audience to limit distractions during the hearing. You're doing a fine job. Please ensure your cell phone ringer has been silenced. Good job so far as well. If you would need to use the restroom, you can just leave through the door here. You don't have to go back downstairs. There are restrooms here on this level, just past the staircase on your left. And I think that's pretty much it. So what we'll do here, I was going to stall for time. I'm hoping Nathan knows we have a hearing today. You guys haven't heard anything from him, have you? Okay. So what we'll go ahead and do, I think, is look at our consent agenda for this afternoon to start with. That's normally the easiest lifting here. And we have two items on the consent agenda. Again, the idea here is city staff have recommended approval of these requested. These are exceptions. They've recommended approval with certain conditions that would go with that approval. So unless the applicant would not agree to the conditions, or if there's somebody here in the audience that wants us to listen to the case before we make a decision, we can certainly remove this from the consent agenda and have an open discussion. Otherwise, we would look to approve these two items. Now, I'll go ahead and list them. Item one is a zoning exception request at 2105 Ingersoll, appears to be related to some signage. Is there anybody here in the audience that would be opposed to us granting that relief or this exception in the sign ordinance? If so, just raise your hand. That's all you'd have to do. Seeing none? Item two is a zoning exception request at 1917 Dean Avenue, primarily related to signage as well with the Des Moines Independent School District. Anybody here in the audience that would be opposed to granting the requested relief? Eric?
The location of it is at 2405 Forest.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Yeah, 1917 Dean is their, yeah, their physical plant office. Yeah, premises here, 2405 Forest. So is there anybody here that would be opposed to us granting the requested exceptions on Forest Avenue for the school district? No hands up? Okay. So board members, anybody here that would want this to be, any of these moved to the normal portion? If none, would there be a motion to grant approvals of item one and two? All right. Motion by Marlis. Second by Rhonda. All those in favor granting the requested appeals, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, that motion passes five to zero. So if you were here for items one and two, they have been approved, you'll get a copy of that decision and order in about a week. So you're welcome to leave the hearing, or you can stick around for the rest of our agenda.
Mr. Chair, I've been informed that Nathan is on his way, about five minutes away.
Okay. All right. We'll try to talk really super slow here. So I think we only have one other item on the agenda. Is that correct, Frank? That's item three for open discussion. I think what I would like to do, I think this would please the gentleman, is we will wait to start item three once Nathan gets here. That'll have six of us so that Nathan's able to kind of hear everything we've got going on. That sound okay? All right. So, yeah, so first time in my 17 years, we're going to take a little, maybe five-minute break.
After 10 minutes.
Yeah, yeah, after 10 minutes of the hearing, so. And we will be sure to tease Nathan about this. All right, I'm going to call.
And we've got little cards of appreciation. So you know, for your.
I should have dressed up more. They didn't tell me it wasn't paid until I said yes to. It's been nine long years. No, real quickly, since I had been brought up. This, I've appreciated my times, especially with you, Mel, and I think Dave was on when I joined. It's been good to get to know people. And this has been the quintessential experience for me in how government affects people's lives on an individual basis, day-to-day, month-to-month. And I've just really appreciated the opportunity to serve in this way, to get to know different parts of the city. We love this community. We're going to miss it a ton, but appreciate the opportunity to serve with all these good people and the staff, too. Almost all of you. Just leave you guessing. Leave you guessing on which one. No, this has been great. This is honestly like one of the things I'll miss most about my time here. I've always enjoyed this time and all the power that comes with it, if not money. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. And our well wishes and that award, that also comes from the city staff, too. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and resume our hearing item. So item number three is a conditional use request for use of a tenant bay for a liquor store. Premises is 4230 Fluor Drive. And we'll have Frank give the introduction on this one.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Item three at 4230 Fluor Drive consists of a request for a conditional use and a separation distance, variance of the separation distance. So they are proposing use of a 4,742 square foot tenant bay for a liquor store, use with sales of alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer. The tenant bay is within approximately 950 feet of an approved fuel station with alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer sales located at 4021 Fluor Drive. I'll show that location in just a moment. It's the new QuickTrip recently built just down the street. So conditional use is required for any liquor stores in the MX3 district as well as variance for the required separation distance necessary for a liquor store not being closer than 1,320 feet from a similar use selling alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer. And here is the site aerial photo. So the parcel is outlined in yellow here. And here, the building that, there's two buildings on the property. The building in which the liquor store would be situated is located to the rear of the And today in that location is the existing Farrell's Extreme Body Shaping that would be changing to the liquor store use. And so this being a northwestern view of the building. And here is a view that is southwestern facing. These are close-ups. And this is going to be more of a view that extends out from the street. This one facing southwest. And this one facing more directly west than it would be northwest that direction. Here is a description of what they are planning to do at this location. Here is the proposed layout. And here is the site plan for the existing site that's obviously already constructed. So staff is recommending denial of the request based upon the not meeting the separation distance requirement, which would constitute a variance. So staff has recommended denial. The comment cards did go out, but we have not received feedback per the comment cards that went out to property owners within 250 feet. What questions do you have for staff?
How did the 1320 number, how did that come about?
Is that a quarter mile?
Yep.
Okay. Frank, you had no, it sounds like no comments back, no cards, no letters. Is this within a neighborhood association boundary or nearby neighborhood association within any radius?
That is correct. It's within the southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association and I believe adjacent to the Watrous.
So both of those would have been notified by default of the request?
Correct. All neighborhood associations are notified, but specifically them.
Okay. Justin?
Frank, did you have a visual of the other liquor store or the come and go?
I think I skipped past that. Let me. Oh, was it?
Yeah, you got a live aerial. Can we zoom out?
I had another aerial. Doesn't look like it's here. I will do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is the new one.
Yep.
Yeah, because that's within the quarter mile distance and pre-existing, so.
What is that?
And while Frank is doing a Google search, I'm just curious whoever would like to answer on staff's behalf. There's a grocery store there in Wakanda Plaza. Does that factor into this? Do they not sell alcohol or is it a different, a different thing that the radius doesn't apply?
That'd be correct. So the classification for separation distance pertains to like businesses and the grocery store would be a, it would have its own classification.
Got it.
So like businesses would be the limited retail.
Sure.
It'd be a liquor store, fuel station, things of that nature.
Okay.
If this is too much, you can go, just go to your aerial and kind of just show me the general direction of where that could.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a fueling station, right?
That is correct. It's at the corner of Watrous and Fluor. I'm not sure why this is being finicky, but it is.
Yeah, we've got to get out of street views, I'm out.
It's not mapped on this computer, not on my drive. It is.
It's a couple lots north of that MX2.
Yeah. It's right.
Because that's the next intersection.
Yeah. It's right up here.
Yeah.
And I was trying to go to Google Maps.
Is the distance measured?
Yeah, we're quite a ways. Back at the Air National Guard base.
It's a real tour of the south side.
Here we go.
Appreciate it. It's my neighborhood.
Getting there now. Because you dropped a pin, that's why. Yeah. There we are.
There it is.
Now you can see the two locations.
So it'd be right here.
Okay.
But it's measured from not the building, right? It's measured from the corner of the site?
It's, it's measured from this tenant to the property line of the existing Quick.
It's not property line to property line?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
And that is why you have one property line, property line for QuickTrip, whereas tenant bay for the user.
Got it. Good question. Any other questions for staff? Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
So if, so QT's kind of affecting this particular situation, what if Casey's wanted to build a convenience store right across the street from QT?
It'd be the same situation. They would have a separation distance variance that they would have to meet.
And is that, is that just recent that we're starting to enforce this like this? Because I can think of a whole bunch of places where there's a Casey's across the street from a liquor store that's next door to a Walgreens that's across the street from a Price Chalk.
The difference between those two is the classification. So the Walgreens would be a large format retail, whereas a, let's say a small, limited retail, the classification is at 4,000?
14,000.
14,000.
Casey's might be a better example, I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
But these are like our micro-managing this thing, try and decide if somebody's going to be a winner or loser on this deal.
Right. And these requirements have been in place since 2013. At the time, it was the council's intent to really limit where we can get liquor stores because there's a proliferation, because at that time, the state had changed the laws that allowed more and more businesses to sell liquor. And so the city council wanted to really limit where we could see new liquor stores go in, so.
Right.
That was, the intent of it is to make it harder for new liquor stores to locate.
Yeah.
The concentration of those uses.
And while each case may have its own merits, I think a few months ago, we had a case on East Euclid, maybe just east I-235, where there were some pre-existing, in essence, liquor stores, a couple of them already there, and there was somebody who wanted to locate, and there was that separation distance issue. You guys might remember that one.
And we sent a letter regarding a different separation distance issue recently, and it sounded like there was going to be review potentially. Is this the type of issue that also might be reviewed? And I don't want to like, I don't know how we're going to come out on this, but is this something that's going to be in that?
No, the, that letter was really referring to businesses selling beer and wine only, not the alcoholic liquor. And it was more the little grocery stores selling beer and wine rather than an actual liquor store.
Yeah, I remember the issue being narrower or separate or different, but I thought that the response was that there was going to be just a general update of everything. If we wanted to, I'm not saying we do, but if we wanted to also flag this issue for review, is that something that we could contribute?
You could, you could. I don't think staff would be supportive of lessening it.
Yep.
But whereas like those little grocery stores selling beer and wine, those aren't as impactful to like residential neighbors. I know this isn't exactly in a residential neighborhood, but a lot of times, there are liquor stores wanting to go right up against a single-family house where the variance or the separation distance requirements really do make an impact and like protect some of the residential uses.
Yeah. So with, within the zoning ordinance, you know, not just to consider this for the use requested, but if we wanted to grant this, we would have to grant a variance, correct?
Exactly. Yeah.
And the variance test is a little tougher.
It's very hard, and the council would then review the decision. They couldn't overturn it, but they could send it back to the board for reconsideration.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? Good questions. Okay, all right. Frank, you good for now? All right. Okay. So applicant or representative of the applicant, it's your turn. You've got up to 10 minutes to give us your reasoning for your variance request. We just need you to start with your name and address as appropriate.
My name is Mike Forjay. Our office is located at 4214 Fluor Drive. That's right there next to the 4230, that location. We own that whole airport plaza with the Goodyear tires, the subway. We own all of those. So we have 22 tenants there. We've owned that since 2003. So the, one of, really the only reason, one of the main reasons that we thought about, we're not in the liquor store business. First of all, I want to, want to back up for a minute. I know liquor store is what it's called, but that's not what our intention is. We, we're looking more for like fine wine spirits, no loitering, no video games, no. And one of the main reasons is, like I said, we own that building. Our office is in that building. So we would like a nice, clean environment. We have 22 other tenants that pay us rent on a monthly basis. We don't want any problems for those people. Subway, we just put a new, the owner of Subway just put a new coffee shop in the front. We don't want any of, any negative feedback. So, but one of the main reasons that we, we thought about this is because when Farrell's decided to move, we had our agent list the property, and he came to us and said, you know, we have some interest from QuickStar. QuickStar is going out and doing quick liquor, liquor stores only. And they like your spot. We also own another building on Army Post where there's a liquor store. That is a liquor store. There's, you know, video games, it's next to the bar. He showed interest in opening in our spot. Well, we felt the best way to control that would be if we owned it and we operated it. We can control the people, we can control, you know, the cleanup. We want to make sure that the area isn't going to be trash and dirty. Like I said, our tenants are there. So, and QuickTrip, I mean, to be, to be honest with you, QuickTrip, I know under the board and the way the rules are set up, it's a like business, but I think we all can agree QuickTrip is a gas station. I mean, we go in there for hot dogs or sodas or gas. They sell the least amount of liquor out of the whole corridor, according to the Iowa Department of Division of Alcohol Sales. So they sell the least amount of alcohol between that whole entire corridor that really affects us. So as a business, we're thinking, well, this isn't really the same type of business. We want to open a gas station and sell liquor. Okay. But I understand it's the board and the way the city council and everything has it. But we're just a family-owned business, and we own about 220 units rental properties. We're developing a commercial center in Norwalk currently. We own a commercial center in Clive. We own that one on Fluor, and we own another one on Army Post. We have about 60 rental units on the south side. So that's pretty much a quarter of our rental business. So that's where we're stationed, that's where we are. So that's it. My father's with me here. He's the owner of the business, owner. He started this in 1974, when we moved here in 1994, and we expanded our business. So I guess that's all I have for you guys. I just, I just hope that, you know, you guys can take it into consideration and see it from the way we are looking at it. We want to specialize, like I said, in Iowa wines, Iowa spirits, a cigar room, you know, not smoking there, of course, but selling cigars. We're not going to sell, you know, there's no groceries, you know, anything like that. It's strictly fine wine and spirits. Any questions?
Questions for Mike? So Mike, I'm curious, you've spent some time, thought, it looks like maybe even a little money on this. I see a little site plan and everything. You guys are no strangers to our zoning ordinance in the city. You have some great properties. I do business at a lot of your properties. My wife gets takeout from Sing Sal like at least once a week. Yeah. Hard to find a parking spot there the way it is.
Yes, yes.
But with your understanding of the ordinance, and I'm sure in talking with staff, I'm sure that you either understood or were told, no, this is not allowed by right. So based on your request that you would need an appeal for a variance, what's the reasoning for the variance? Because the test is pretty high here. You have to show that your property can't yield a reasonable return from any other use, that it's unique circumstances that aren't of your making, and that finally, it's not one or the other, it's all, that it won't alter the essential character of the area. So those are the things we have to take into account to say yes to something.
I understand. As far as the area goes, when you were asking about the neighborhood association, George Davis, he was at our informational meeting, and he signed the sheet, and he told me that according to him and the association, they had no issues with us. He only had requested, he thought that we were going to put a liquor store, we wanted to put a liquor store at 42nd and Park. There's an old Conoco gas station or Valera gas station. He said they would have a problem with that because it was next to a Cleaners and because of the area, it was all residential. But he said, you're on Fluor, as far as the neighborhood division goes, we don't have a problem. I mean, that's, that's all I have for you, sir.
But you don't have an email or a letter?
No. I mean, he signed the short, the sheet, and he said that he would notify whoever. But no, he didn't give us any letter.
Okay.
George.
Yep. Yep. I know Mr. Davis well.
Yes, yeah.
Coach.
Yeah, coach, yeah. Very nice guy. Very nice guy.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions for Mike? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, the way this part of this agenda item works, if anybody wishes to speak in support of the applicant, they can step forward and have up to five minutes if they'd like. I know we've got a big audience here yet. Seeing none, if there's anybody who wishes to speak in opposition, they can do same or even neutrality, please step forward, seeing none. Do we have any further questions for the zoning enforcement officer? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and close the public portion then and go to board deliberation. Thoughts among the members?
Well, this is, we live within walking distance of this area, and I appreciated the presentation, and I don't disagree with anything that was presented. I think it's wildly different. I didn't even know, I get gassed at that QT a lot, didn't even know they sold liquor. That's not the place we go for liquor along Fluor. And I think the, frankly, the neighborhood, if not the, you know, the commercial area would probably benefit from this type of business. All that said, the law is pretty clear on the variance test. I'd be in favor of the conditional use permit, but it would be worthless without the variance. And the variance test, Mel, as you kind of laid out, and as I've harped on, I think, all nine years of my service here, is really tough to meet. And I don't think applicant has shown that there's no reasonable use that could, that could be placed here. In fact, they just had a tenant there recently, and it sounds like, you know, there's plenty of other tenants in their area. I think it's unfortunate. I'm not fully convinced, or is not as convinced as staff or the city council in 2013 that this is a necessary requirement, but I wasn't elected to make policy. So I'll be voting no.
Other thoughts?
I guess I'm less sensitive to the variance test because I look at this, it's a business. They're unfortunately caught up in the middle of some, a change in zoning, and we've got a QuickTrip that is a behemoth that sells liquor. I, I can tell you, I've never bought liquor in a QuickTrip. I don't even think about going there to buy liquor. So the fact that we've got a property owner that's interested in more of an upscale approach to liquor, wine, sales, it's probably would be a nice little amenity for that area. I'm, like I said, I, of everyone on this board, I probably go against the variance more than anyone. So I guess I'd just see that we can bend the rules if we want to. So I'm, I'm in favor of letting him give this thing a whirl. And he sounds like he's got a successful business going, he's got a good plan, and I'd be comfortable with putting it in there. There's places all over town that this situation currently exists. Those were all grandfathered in, and I'm here again, I'm not, this isn't going to affect QuickTrip one minute. They're not going to lose any sales, I think, because of this. And I think this guy could bring some real value to folks in the area, so that's my thoughts.
Anyone else? Rhonda?
I'm agreeing with Dave. I feel like that would be a nice area for like a wine and spirits, the nice wine that you could drop in and get, and that's all you're getting. It's like QT doesn't really get affected, but the variance part of it is where I'm kind of hanging, like how much can we say okay, because I'm kind of for it, that this would be a nice additive to Fluor.
What else? This is why we're here.
Yeah, no, I mean, the city council made a change for a reason, and it's been in, it's been the policy for quite some time now. And we, as a board, have to work within the confines of that policy and the law that's been established. And so, you know, the criteria established by law has not been met here, and so it, it needs to be denied.
Marla's?
The same.
Okay.
To my right.
Yep. Yep, yeah, this, this is a tough one at face value. Yeah, again, I'm a south sider. I go to a lot of the properties. You guys have helped get some properties turned around in Des Moines, and I generally like what you do. We have to keep in mind a lot of the things that were mentioned here within our role. Sometimes we do bend the rules, but we have to be able to defend that, and we have to legally be able to defend that. You know, there are certain things that, you know, as I say here, if somebody disagrees with our decision, they can take us to district court. The council can choose to have us look at this again, but the council could also potentially sue their own board of adjustment if they didn't like a decision that we might make. Not saying related to this one, one way or the other, but we always have to keep our legal requirement in mind here. And I don't know if there's a magic number, 1320, it's a quarter mile drag racing, so I'm familiar with it. But is 1,000, 500? I mean, what is that distance? But when, you know, QuickTrip built there, that's a relatively newer store, that's Coca-Cola bottling used to be there. When that QuickTrip was built, they had to consider some of this stuff, too, but they met the separation distance. So I don't think it's a matter of, it's not about hurting existing liquor stores businesses one way or the other. I don't care about that. That's not the purpose of the ordinance. The citizens and our council at the time decided that they wanted to make sure that there wasn't a proliferation of liquor stores in any stretch, any commercial district, by having reasonable separation distances. That's the distance they chose. If I can find a variance for somebody, I like to try to do that when it's reasonable. I'd like to here, but I can't myself. It's just, it's too big of a hill to climb, and we've had some other cases that were very similar, where it was just about the separation distance, and we had to say no there as well. So depending on what anybody would like to do here, the floor is open if there'd be a motion one way or the other.
I'll move staff recommendation to deny the variance and conditional use permit.
I second it.
All right. So we got a motion by Nathan for denial, second by Marla's. All those in favor to deny the requested appeal and the proposed conditional use, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's five nay. That's one. Okay. All right. I hope you guys can find a way to do this cool operation, but it might need to be in a different location. So we appreciate you coming in today for consideration. Okay. So that takes care of our agenda for today, minutes of last meeting. Anybody who was here last month, if they reviewed the minutes, are there any changes? If none, would there be a motion to grant approval? I'll make a motion to grant approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Second by Marla's. All those in favor, we're here last month, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries five zero. We would more than likely do elections next month to replace whoever the vice chair, like may be, would have no open nomination. Would we want to wait until we have a new member appointed to do that? Or we can talk about it?
I think we should. We'll file a motion.
Okay, all right, yeah, which is next month, so, okay. All right. Well, we haven't entirely kicked him out the door yet, so.
I didn't, yeah. I think I just formally filed my resignation yesterday, so.
We all.
I did, I did email the mayor a couple weeks ago, though, so I don't know if he's thought about it.
Well, yeah, yeah, he should have followed up, you know. But I encourage all citizens, anybody who's watching or listening, if you're interested in serving the city, there are dozens of boards and commissions, and you can see those online. You can put in an application way ahead of time, even if there's not a vacancy. So depending on who might be interested, or certainly our council folks will reach out to people that care about their community, so. And I think all of us, that's been a combination of how we got here. Either, you know, somebody suggested it, or we reached out, or we filed online, so. So again, Nathan, want to thank you for your time serving with us. It's been a pleasure. We're sorry to lose you, but it's good to call you an island for quite some time, so. All right, this hearing is formally adjourned.